Okay, we can talk. I'm talking.
It's like the Betty Wonder.
Don't say that.
I mean, I don't want anything to happen.
New Jersey Public Law Act.
Do you think we get it in person?
...to ensure the rights of the public and advance notice of and to attend the meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting our interests is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of this act, the Riverdale Regional Board of Education has caused notice of this regular meeting to be publicized by having the date, time, and place there upset to the records, the rich reviews, and the town newspapers, the constituents, borough clerks, and borough libraries, as well as posting in the school district principal offices, faculty rooms, and the board office. According to New Jersey Public Law 2001, Chapter 226, the smoking or use of any tobacco product strictly prohibited anywhere in the public school building or anywhere in school grounds, including but not limited to parking lots, grassy areas, and athletic fields. Prior labels will be subject to applying not to exceed one hundred and fifty dollars. Since this is the reorganization meeting, I will read the election results. In Ordell, John Samuel's total vote, seven hundred and twenty-five. In River Edge, Claudia O'Neill, total votes, one thousand eight hundred and twenty-nine. And also in River Edge, Annette Forelli, total votes, one thousand five hundred and thirty-six. I will now administer the oath of office.
It's here. You didn't notice?
I've sat next to you before.
Yes, we're reunited.
I, Claudia Dussolem, swear, I am currently in the status of newswreverend, but I will support it if I have to, in the United States, I will support it.
The United States. Or offenses listed to NJ S eighteen dash one.
Faithfully and justly.
Faithfully and partially and justly.
Perform all the duties of that office according to the best of my abilities to help me God.
Perform all the duties, oops, sorry. Perform all the duties of that office according to the best of my. Is that a new start?
Yeah.
That's a very technical. Oh. Exactly. Too complicated.
Never apologize.
I do.
I, John Samuel Dussolem, swear.
I, John Samuel Dussolem, swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance.
And bear true faith and allegiance.
To the same and to the governments established in the United States.
To the same and to the governments established in the United States.
And this state under the authority of the people, so help me God.
And this state under the authority of the people, so help me God.
I, John Samuel Dussolem, swear.
I, John Samuel Dussolem, swear.
That I possess the qualifications prescribed by law.
That I possess the qualifications, possess by law.
For the office of member of Board of Education.
For the office of member of Board of Education.
And that I am not disqualified as a voter.
And I am not disqualified as a voter.
Pursuant to RS nineteen four dash one.
Yes.
Nor disqualified for conviction of a crime.
Nor disqualified for conviction of a crime.
For offense listed in New Jersey S B P A twenty twelve dash one.
I agree.
And that I will faithfully, partially, and justly.
And I will faithfully, and partially, and justly.
Perform all the duties of that office.
Perform all the duties of that office.
According to best of my ability.
According to the best of my abilities, so help me God.
Please raise your right hand after me. I, Annette Forelli, do solemnly swear.
I, Annette Forelli, do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance.
And I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the same and to the governments established in the United States.
To the same and to the governments established in the United States.
And this state under the authority of the people, so help me God.
And this state under the authority of the people, so help me God.
I, Annette Forelli, do solemnly swear.
I, Annette Forelli, do solemnly swear.
That I will possess the qualifications prescribed by law.
That I possess the qualifications prescribed by law.
For the office of the member of the Board of Education.
For the office of member of a Board of Education.
And that I am not disqualified as a voter.
And that I am not disqualified as a voter.
Pursuant into RS nineteen dash four one.
Pursuant to RS nineteen dash four one.
Nor disqualified due to conviction of a crime or offense.
Nor disqualified due to conviction of a crime or offense.
Listed in NJ S eighteen A twelve dash one.
Listed in NJ S eighteen A twelve dash one.
And that I will faithfully and partially and justly.
And that I will faithfully and partially and justly.
Perform all the duties of that office according to best of my abilities, so help me God.
Perform all the duties of that office according to the best of my abilities, so help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Lay out all the dash dot.
Oh, yeah. That's a deal breaker.
Alan?
Here.
John?
Here.
Tracy Allen?
Here.
Doug?
Here.
Barbara?
Here.
Stephanie?
Here.
Al? Now, we'll now ask for nominations for the office of Board President.
I'd nominate Al Graham for president. I'll second.
Are there any other nominations for president? You know what the nomination? Take the roll call. Claudia?
I'm going to see.
Alan?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Annette?
Yes.
Tracy Allen?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
Barbara?
Yes.
Stephanie?
Yes.
Al?
I'll stand.
This time, I'll turn the meeting over to Al.
Okay, thank you. May I have a call for nomination for the office of Board Vice President, please?
I'd like to nominate Stephanie.
I'll second.
Do we have any other nominations for Board Vice President? Okay, Trudy?
Claudia? Yes. Alan?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Annette? Yes. Tracy Allen? Yes. Doug?
Yes.
Barbara?
Yes.
Stephanie?
No.
Al?
Yes. Okay. Any board members have comments on the agenda? Okay, we're gonna, I'm gonna handle this the way we have in the past. I'm gonna take them in bunches of resolutions, in bunches of five. I will quickly describe what we are voting on. So the first, the first group of five is the law firm being retained, the school physician, Dr. Stephen Warhol, being retained, the reappointment of the firm of Smolli and Lufen and Company, that's the auditors. Number four is the two doctors as concussion management physicians at no cost to the board. Number five is the reappointment of Erwin Escolas, Treasurer of School Monies. May I have a motion on these first five, please?
I'll second.
Claudia? Second. Al, thank you. And Trudy, you ready?
Claudia? Yes. Alan?
Yes.
Annette?
Yes.
Tracy Allen?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
Barbara?
Yes.
Stephanie?
Yes.
Al?
Yes. Six through ten. Number six are the barriers back accounts that the school keeps and the authorized signatures for the Board of Education needed for each one of these back accounts. Number seven, the board proves the establishment of petty cash accounts for the board office in the athletic department. Number eight, the official notices of the B O E meetings are published in the record, the town news, and the Star-Ledger newspapers. Number nine is the schedule of the Board of Education meetings that are held at eight P M, executive sessions starting at seven thirty P M, unless we noted in the high school media center where we are now. Number ten is that the president, or persons physically elected by the president, that be appointed to delegate to the Bergen County School Board Association. Do you have a motion for six through ten, please?
Do you have an motion?
I'll second.
Doug? Second. Trudy, when you're ready.
Claudia?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Annette?
Yes.
Tracy Allen?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
Barbara?
Yes.
Stephanie?
Yes.
Al?
Yes. Grouping eleven through fifteen. The readoption of all textbooks currently in use in the district is eleven. Number twelve is the readoption of the Riverdale Regional School Program of Studies, the curriculum, proficiencies and standards currently in use and previously approved by the board in prior years. Number thirteen, the board reaffirm its approval of all previously formally approved policies. Number fourteen, the school, the superintendent, let's see, slow down, that the board authorized the business administrator to permit individual companies, such as tax shelters and other personal benefits groups, to solicit for membership. Number fifteen, Riverdale Regional School District, let's see, a member of the South Bergen of workers' compensation pool. May I have a motion for eleven through fifteen, please?
So moved. I'll second.
Okay. Any questions on any of these as we go along, please speak up, because I'm just gonna kind of go through these quick. Trudy?
Claudia?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Annette?
Yes.
Tracy Allen?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
Barbara?
Yes.
Stephanie?
Yes.
Al?
Yes. Grouping sixteen through twenty. Riverdale Regional Board of Education members will abide by the New Jersey School Board Member Code of Ethics. Seventeen. Okay, this is where we, Board of Education, without advertising for bids or after having rejected all bids obtained pursuant to advertising, therefore by resolution may purchase any goods or services pursuant to a contract or contracts for such goods or services entered into behalf of the state by the Division of Purchase and Property. Number eighteen, the board approved the appointment of Gertrude Engel, also known as Trudy, as the board secretary through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. And number nineteen, the governing body hereby appoints Gertrude Engel as a qualified purchasing agent. And number twenty is the, the board authorizes the business administrator to execute all emergency repairs for the calendar year of twenty twenty-two and report to the board upon completion. May I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion.
Stephanie?
I'll second.
Alan with the second. And Trudy?
Claudia?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Annette?
Yes.
Tracy Allen?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
Barbara?
Yes.
Stephanie?
Yes.
Al?
Yes. Okay, the last group here is twenty-one through twenty-four. Number twenty-one, the maximum amount for conference mileage for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year be fifty one thousand nine hundred and fifteen dollars. As of December sixteenth, the amount expensed is twenty-five seventy-six. In addition, the maximum amount for conference mileage for twenty-one, twenty-two school year be fifty-five, is that date correct? Okay, be fifty-five thousand. The superintendent may authorize travel for staff members between board meeting dates. Number twenty-two, approve the purchasing manual, which is located in the board office. Number twenty-three, it is recommended by the superintendent and board secretary that the board approve the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-two standard operating procedure, which is also located in the board office. And finally, number twenty-four, it is recommended by the superintendent and board secretary that the board approve the asbestos management plan, which is also located in the board office. May I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion. I'll second.
Claudia and Stephanie, thank you.
Claudia?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Annette?
Yes.
Tracy Allen?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
Barbara?
Yes.
Stephanie?
Yes.
Al?
Any public questions or comments on any of this? No? Okay. Make.
That was like record speed. Seriously.
Absolutely.
Three people want a resolution to get on board and doing all these. That's pretty impressive.
Yes.
Do we adjourn this part of the meeting? I guess we do.
Yes.
Do we have a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion.
Claudia? Alan, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Seven sixteen, seven seventeen.
Are we standing for the words?
Who said, who made the number?
Myself.
Claudia and Al.
Al.
I got Claudia, Al, thank you.
Yep. The mission of the Riverdale Regional School District is to provide a safe, student-centered environment in which each student is valued and respected, to challenge each student to reach his or her potential, to nurture every student's intellectual, social, physical, and emotional growth, to promote a healthy work ethic, a passion for learning, and a respect for oneself and others, to develop responsible citizens for our diverse community and an ever-changing world, to continue to involve our community in active partnership, and to provide all students the opportunity to achieve and exceed the New Jersey student learning standards and the New Jersey Core Curriculum content standards. We jump into public comments on agenda items only. There will be a segment at the end of the meeting for public comments on any other business pertaining to Riverdale Regional School District. So if anyone from the public has any comments on agenda items only, please step up to the microphone. Okay. We will not have a student member report because they are not here tonight. President's report. Again, since I didn't know that I would be president, I really didn't have anything planned to say, so I'm gonna just pass it on over to the superintendent, Mr. Fletcher, if he has anything for us tonight.
Yes, if you may, I just had an open call for students, who are in the area of Spanish for Latin.
Right on time. There you go.
Well, the time is confusing.
Yes. It is. So I hope everyone had a nice school break and that we had a chance to celebrate with family and friends. I know that in my own particular case, we did have to modify our family get-togethers because of the rising COVID numbers that we are experiencing. And it frankly gave me another wonderful opportunity to skip New Year's Eve entirely and watch some crazy television with those shows that were, with the ball drop and all the other stuff, that was crazy. However, what did not take a break was COVID, and that's basically what I want to just talk to you about. So we had a very active week before school went on break. We were COVID testing, I'm sorry, contact tracing, probably until four, four, five o'clock on Thursday of the break. We do have here Mr. Pepe, our high school principal, Brian, if you wouldn't mind waving, and then Mr. Urbanovich, who is our middle school principal. And I just want to take a moment to thank them and your staff for doing yeoman's work during that period of time. I know it was very difficult. And the sad thing for us in education is that for the last two years, that's what we've been doing, is becoming public health officials as opposed to educators. And I know we all struggle with that situation. So it was pretty quiet during the beginning of the week, but I sent out a reminder to the community on New Year's Eve, and that created an impetus for people to start notifying the building principals and the nurses of active COVID cases. And they came fast and furious all the way up until about five o'clock last night, and then they started again this morning. So I want to give you some idea of what those numbers are and talk to you a little bit about some options that are there. So since the break began, which was December twenty-second, the middle school has thirty-three confirmed positive cases and an additional thirty-two students who are in quarantine due to some form of close contact, whether it be a family member or something else. That's sixty-five, that's a total of sixty-five students, which is eleven percent of our student population. At the high school, there's eighty-seven confirmed positive cases before, Brian just told me he got a couple more, and fifty-seven additional students in quarantine for the exposure of some sort, which amounts to be a hundred and forty-four students, or fourteen point four percent of our population at the high school. At the same time, we have three confirmed cases in staff in the middle school and fourteen confirmed cases of staff in the high school. The reason those numbers are significant is, now I know there's, out there, there's this myth, if you will, that if you come to a number of fifteen percent of your population being affected by some communicable disease, that you close schools in order to shut down the pandemic. There isn't a formal statute on that, and you went to look it up, you wouldn't see it. But it's a barometer that we use, and it's also a, something that if you looked at the Department of Health's regulations itself, which is a different administrative code than ours, that number circulates a bit, the fifteen percent. So we are right on the cusp of dealing with that. We've also, we met administratively today and had a very extensive conversation over a number of different approaches to this. And one of the things that is really going to drive some of our decision-making will be the number of staff that become compromised because of the COVID. And we've kind of figured out that if we had the total of ten students, ten staff members at the middle school and fifteen staff members at the high school, which a combination of twenty-five any different way would be sufficient for us that we wouldn't have enough staff to effectively operate. So even today, with enough, with a fair amount of warning, we were still, I believe it was three subs short at the high school. The high school is where it seems to be the biggest issue right now, but we don't know. Both buildings sent students home today. There were a number of students in both buildings that we sent home, not necessarily because of COVID-related items, but because of an illness or something like that. because of COVID-related items, but because of an illness or something like that, which if a child goes to the pediatrician, nine times out of 10, they administer a COVID test right away. There are a number of families that have notified us about that they're keeping their kids home as a precaution, that those precautionary numbers are not included in this. These are the actual cases that we have on file. And I suspect that that number will increase over the course of the next few days. So I remain very concerned about our ability to continue to operate the school buildings with in-person instruction. And while I have received some emails from parents, and I know that the other administrators have received emails from parents, generally speaking, the, generally speaking, the parents are looking for an option for staying remotely as a precautionary measure. And what's confusing that is what was announced in Montclair just a couple of days ago, where Montclair is providing that option. I don't know where they're getting the authority to do that because we did have a conference call with, we, meaning the superintendents in Region 5, which are the 13 districts around us. We did have a conference call on Tuesday. Some of, there's, as I said, 13 people were on the line. We had some folks who had different responsibilities before we got to the meeting, like call the county office, find out what your options are, call the health department, et cetera, et cetera. And providing a remote option is for non-exposed or non-positive is not an option. It's not available to us under the road forward. So how Montclair is doing it is, I don't, I don't know. I'm not going to comment on it, but we can't use Montclair as a guide for us. There are some school districts that in a preemptive measure decided to have half-days this week and next week. The only one in Bergen County that I'm aware of is TNEC. Hackensack as a district, which is right next to us, is closed for remote instruction during this period of time. But I, I think it's inevitable, and I, it's hard for me to say that, but I think it's inevitable that we're going to get to a point, and it could happen sometime this week, where we may have to switch to remote learning for a period of time. You know, generally speaking, it's a two-week period. That's what people are doing. What I've seen in most of the large cities across New Jersey, Patterson, Camden, Jersey City, et cetera, they've gone remote through the day after Martin Luther King Day, which I think is the 18th. I'm not quite sure. I think that will be something similar that we would be looking at, and we have had, as I said, administrative council discussion today. We would just follow the existing schedule that we have in place, but it would be remote, And we would still be able to maintain the athletic and co-curricular activities because they could still go on. This afternoon at 5:00, we were, again, because of our conversation, we released, or I released to the general community, a limitation on attendees at sporting events. So we're going to effective immediately only allow two spectators per student athlete that's participated. So as an example, if you have five basketball players on the team, there's more than that. But if you have five, they can invite, each invite two people, so you would have 10 spectators on a home side. That would be the same case for those on the visitor's side. Visitors would have to give Mr. Nelson upfront who would be coming so that we could check it off. Unfortunately, that means that we would be eliminating just general students attending the activities until further notice. We'll keep revising the matter and keep looking at it. So the, at the same time, even though it was a short break, under Trudy's direction, there was a lot of work being done here at the high school and the middle school. We had three... Three motors in the rooftop units here replaced. We had two down in the middle school replaced. They're more powerful so that we can use a higher-grade filter in there. As I explained to you before, we talked about this at other meetings, one of the things that we're, we've been doing is experimenting to see if our current systems can handle up to a MERV 13, which is a hospital-grade filter. Currently, our level is MERV 8. We do have some MERV 13s on the newer units. That's what they were built for. But we seem to be having some success at not overtaxing the system with the higher level of filter. So I'm hopeful that in a very short period of time, we'll be using MERV 13 as our standard throughout the school district, which will help, if you will, in the filtration of any exchange of air, outside air coming in, anything that runs through the filters. It's not without risk, and we all understand that part of the issue is that the denser the filter you have, the harder the unit has to work to push air through it, which could theoretically overtax the motors inside the HVAC units that we have. But so far, we've been successful at experimenting with that, so I think we're going to be able to move in that direction. So despite increasing our filter level, despite limiting some activities, we also have some very positive actions by some of our own students. I was copied in on a note today where the music department has decided to push off their classical night because of the rise in COVID cases. And that was an initiative that they put forward themselves. I applaud them for that effort. I know that there were some other activities planned for the next couple of days, which involved some sports teams, which have also been pushed off. I know that there are some events that people are still struggling with, but you know, just remember, if there's a booster club involved, et cetera, booster clubs are not part of our, of the school district, they're not under our auspices, so they can still have their own activities outside, which some do, some may. And I suspect that we have not seen any type of surge associated with the holiday period that we just came through. And I suspect that that will cause us to have higher numbers as we come forward. So and for the last three letters that I sent home to the community, including the one on New Year's Eve, I said, remote is a possibility. I don't want anybody to say, I never heard about this, I never saw about this, but it certainly is a possibility. And if our numbers continue to go in the direction that they are, I will be consulting with our health departments. I have to tell you, I've already taken a preemptive step and spoken to both of the health departments to see, because again, remember, River Edge has its own health department, Oradell deals with the Bergen County Health Department, and what has to happen is you have to have a consultation with them. They're not going to tell you to close the school, but they are gonna, you will have a consultation with them, and they'll basically tell you if your reasoning is sound or not. So preemptively, I've spoken to them to let them know that our numbers are rising and that we could be in that situation, and I suspect that they will remain supportive of us if we have to go in that direction. I do speak regularly with the superintendents from River Edge and Oradell so that we could kind of keep our things together, but they're experiencing different numbers than we are. Their numbers are lower, not much, but lower, because as we all know, the biggest area that we're seeing is transmission in the community. While there have been a lot of cases here, we are, we, and I suspect that there have been some crossovers where you had an infected student that provided the infection to someone else. It's not an apparent issue that we see broadly. We're not in a position where I can say, forgive me for using you. Claudia O'Neil came to school, was not feeling well, she got tested, and she gave it to Alan. We're not seeing that as much. We can't verify that. However, there's just so many people with it. The positive is that we all see the variant that we're currently dealing with, which is still, which is making up a large part of the infection, although we can ignore Delta. Delta variant is still out there, and it's much more virulent than the other one. The Omicron seems to be relatively mild in cases, especially in vaccinated people, and it seems to move through the people relatively quickly. I also want to clarify that, you know, the CDC announced some revised quarantine guidelines last week. Those do not apply to public schools. The Department of Health and the Department of Education have not adopted those for schools. So we are still operating under a guidance that was provided, the last guidance was December 15th, which was the 10-day quarantine period that can be shortened to seven with the negative test given five to seven days after either symptom onset or a positive test. As you all are aware, it's very difficult to get a test because there are so many people trying to get tests. We are thankful again that we've been able to continue our testing program, and Trudy was able to, as a courtesy, secure a whole host of rapid tests, so we were able to test over 80 faculty members, staff members, I should say, on the Wednesday before break so that we could provide some level of comfort. And I'm happy to say that we did not receive one positive result from that. So what that means to me is that the staff members that we are dealing with now got it afterwards. All right? But as you are probably aware, you could test negative in the morning and test positive in the afternoon. So it's, it's with, you know, a wink and a nod that you say some of these things. But despite that sobering news after the holiday break, what I want to do is just remind people that remote instruction remains a possibility. Our numbers are climbing to a point where we can't ignore it. We did a pretty good job, I think, getting the buildings open today, and our, you know, the attendance is going to continue to drop. So it's going to come to some point where we have to make a decision. And I just laid out for you those parameters. So I don't know if anybody has any questions for me about COVID. Yes, ma'am?
I have many.
Please.
So the, not the group that is COVID positive, students, but the group that's out for an exposure. Are they unvaccinated? Are they unwell? Are they, what, what's causing, that's a pretty high number. So what's causing, are they being precautionary? Like what, what's causing such a large number of people to stay out?
Well, clearly, any, clearly, there's a large number of those people who are unvaccinated.
Okay.
However, what we are seeing, and what we have been seeing since really the Thanksgiving time, is that close contact in the home, where a parent has it or a child has it, has been leading to multiple infections in the same household, despite vaccination status and despite all the attempts, because that close contact in the home is so much different than close contact at, you know, Chuck E. Cheese or the movie theater or something like that. So what we have been seeing in the larger number of that is that there's a family member who's tested positive in that, and we've been encouraging people to keep kids in quarantine until everybody gets tested and we can resolve whether or not that close to contact in the family. All of these kids have also been provided, a student should have been provided a virtual link to be able to participate.
Okay. So if we go to remote, and we go to remote to really kill it, for lack of a better word, or give it time to wave through, then why are we having extracurricular and athletics?
Well, it's a good question, but there's no reason, there's no reason to stop it.
They're indoors.
Pardon?
They're not outdoor athletics, they're indoor athletics.
I know, I know. Well, again, safe, from a safety perspective, which has been remarkable to me, is that aside from the varsity girls' basketball program and the varsity boys' basketball program, we have not had an outbreak in any other activity, including wrestling, which I'm amazed that I thought, like, shoot, I thought we would be having a lot more exposure in wrestling. So the protocols that they have in place are good, and there's no reason to prevent that from happening, particularly how important that they are for participation. And of course, as I just said, we're limiting access to it.
Okay. And what's the potential opportunity? I know both of our nurses in last school year were registered to be able to give vaccines. I don't know, I, you know, Mrs. Greer retired, so I don't know if our new nurses, but what's the potential for perhaps running a booster program here?
Well, again, could we do it? Sure. We've, we tried in the past to get vaccines on-site here. We were not successful at doing that, and I think it's because there were other options that were available with the larger settings. I think if it was available to us, we would certainly take advantage of it, whether it would be our personnel or an outside agency that's doing it. The problem that we're having is that most of the kids are not in the five-to-six-month window yet for the double dose where they can get there. Because they, most of our students got their, last year's senior class was very active in the late April, May, and June period of time. The other classes became active in getting their booster, getting their shots in July through now, and we had an enormous number of kids who got their vaccination in August. So they're just becoming on the cusp. And I think it was just yesterday or the day before that the CDC recommended the booster shot for the 12 through 15, so they're just entering that, that possibility.
So could we just kind of keep it on the radar?
Oh, sure.
For a possibility to do? I think that...
I'll follow up to Stephanie's question. You sent an email to correct your vaccination data. Do you see any increases to what you gave us an update on?
We're still holding at 72%, which is, so what, what took place is in, I guess it was October, we sent out a community blast to remind you to give us the cards. And in that blast, we said we would be then targeting an email. So we are now sending an email almost once a week to the people who have not provided vaccination information to us. We're not copied on that. No one is. It's because it goes direct to those individuals. And we saw an uptick in cards being submitted in the very beginning of December, and then we saw an uptick the second week of December. But what we're still finding is that when we're doing contact tracing now, we have students that show up in our system that are not vaccinated, and the parents say they're vaccinated, and we say, submit the card to us. And we're still seeing today families that are, they're not providing us the vaccination information until they fall into a close contact situation. So we got two more cards over break. I hope there's going to be more, but that, we're still at about 72% of the population, student population.
How much is that?
94. No movement on that. No movement on that. It will be, it'll tick up a little bit because there's two, two, two staff members that are just getting their second dose that I'm aware of, so it'll tick up a little bit, but...
And here's Stephanie, I think we should try to do another drive, even if it's not the booster, but maybe might encourage people who don't have the first.
We hit them every, once a week, we get them, we hit those families.
No, I mean, if we do a vaccination drive here.
Oh, that's what I meant.
Pat, I have one more question.
Yes.
Should we, should we be going virtual? What's the expectation with the staff becoming here to be instructing? Would the staff be home, like you can?
They would have the option, I feel. Yeah, the buildings will remain open. Somebody has to be here, which we, which we will. Our, you know, our offices are continuing to go every day. So are the buildings, the building level offices. But we would probably give them the option. When we, when we were virtual last year, we probably had about 40% of the staff would come in on a regular basis to, to work out of here. Just because the internet's faster and there's other things that are going.
I have a couple, a couple of questions.
Sure.
I know that there was some communications from the community regarding parents who are preemptively keeping their kids home. And I know our, our policy has been that you only get virtual instruction if you have a close contact or you're sick.
Right.
Is there any reason why we should consider changing that now to give the community more opportunity to be at home, to reduce the population in the school for parents that choose that? I know in general it's harder from a teaching perspective. And so the, you know, I don't want to, I mean, the reality is, is that you degrade kind of both.
Yeah.
But at this point, given where we are, does that make sense to?
Well, again, I spoke to the county office today, this county superintendent, executive county superintendent today. His position is it's not an option. It's because the road forward is very clear. And the governor had a press conference this afternoon around 2:00 and he was adamant about it. So I know some other district, I know one other district, as I mentioned before, that has gone this route. And I don't know what's going to happen with them or to them. But it's, it's, you know, it's not in the guidance. It's not part of the road forward. It's not part of what the governor is.
So then the next question is if that, if that's the case, the families that are not sending their kids to school, they're getting marked absent?
Yeah, that, yes, because we still have casual absences, sure.
But you think there are, there's a limit?
There's a limit, but we're, if, we recognize that we are in an unusual situation. And it will certainly be taken into consideration as we get down to whether or not a child would be losing credit because of attendance.
And do we have any ability from a, from a vac, from a vaccination standpoint? I know from a school standpoint, we can, but extracurricular activities are, you know, we have, we have rules and regulations regarding those. Do we, if we chose to have the ability to mandate if someone is in an extracurricular or club, that for safety purposes, that's a requirement? Just as we require other, other options?
Well, interestingly enough, in, in some guidance that came out last week, which was a response to the CDC revised guidelines, the Department of Health recommended that non-vaccinated students not be able to participate in anything. And that, there was one other thing that was part of it, I forget what it is. But anyway, shortly thereafter, NJSIA, which runs the sports program, came out and says, we are not adopting this and we are not changing our plan. So I, I don't think we have the legal authority at this point to do it. I, I would, I would hope that we could. You know, when you go through the health guidelines, the health administrative code in particular, the, it's, it's in Department of Health, it's not in, our code is 26. It's not in 26, it's in 7. And if you go to administrative code, they actually have a listing of, of the vaccines that are required, that you have to have. And it's one of, you know, you go through the list and it tells you what it is. COVID is not on there, the COVID vaccines are not on there yet. So I don't think we have the authority to do so.
Isn't the percentage of students in an extracurricular or club very high anyway? Isn't it like 90%?
Oh, yeah.
So it's virtually the whole building anyway, for the most part?
Yeah, it is, it is, for the most part. Our, our staff is, I mean, our, the participation that we have is very high. We're at 80, 80, I would say 80% of our kids are participating, maybe more, in some form of extracurricular activity, some club, whether it be sport, club, etc. Yeah, probably that high. Yeah.
When we were doing the temperature checks, did that ever detect anyone come in with high temperature when we were previously doing that?
Did it? Yeah. Did it effectively provide us with issues with a prevention from COVID? I don't think so. I think it kept kids with fevers out of school, you know, unfortunately. We did not, we did not get much value out of that testing or out of the signing sheets that kids had.
We don't hear much about that anymore. I don't know if that's still a policy or not to check temperatures.
There are some districts that are doing it, very few, but some that are doing it. So that concludes my report.
Thank you, sir. I do not believe we had any committee meetings since our last meeting.
No.
I would just like to take a second here to welcome Annette. Because I, we didn't have a report. Claudia and, and John were encumbrance. Annette is new. We do have profiles online for all the board members. Maybe you could tell us a little bit about yourself? We know you're from River Edge, but maybe what you do for a living? Because I personally don't know you, I don't know how many of the board members do.
Thank you, thanks for the welcome. And thanks for everyone who's kind of stepped aside as I've been peeking in the last few meetings. I look forward to being here. I, I was a elementary school teacher for 33 years. I have lived in River Edge for 20. My children attended River Edge Schools and went to Rivertown High School and had wonderful experiences. We've been active in the community. My husband, actually, who's here, was a volunteer coach. I'm, we're both parishioners at St. Peter's. And I just wanted this next chapter of, of my life to include still education. It's something that's close to my heart. I have, I'm currently a field supervisor for Seton Hall University. And I work with their student teachers in the field as a liaison between the university and the district that they're doing their internships with, their clinical field experiences. So I just fit, when this opportunity arose, it seemed like something that the timing was, was right. It seemed like a, an organ, a machine that was running well. And I've always heard very positive things about the group who are here and the ability to get things done in, in a way that you, at times, I'm sure, have to agree to disagree, but we can still be productive and move forward. So I, I look forward to being a continued part of, of this organization and all that you can do. And I do believe our school systems, which are so unique, you know, two towns, three systems, is, is a challenge. But it's the most important thing we have in our communities. And, and my goal was to become a part of something that allows students to become the best they can and yet be fiscally responsible to all the people in both communities and, and knowing that people in our communities have children in the schools and do not. So I think it's, it's, it's quite the challenge that you guys have taken on and, and I look forward to learning from everyone and, and listening quite a bit. So I appreciate all your help and kind of nudgees along procedurally until I, I get my feet, my feet wet. And I will continue to go with the ongoing education that's offered. I've already taken my orientation and I'm going to continue to take those classes. So I thank you for the warm welcome and I look forward to jumping in and hopefully being an asset to something that looks already well-running. So thank you very much.
Thank you for running and taking the seat. You'll be a very valuable member of, of the board. If you ever have any questions, feel free to reach out to anybody. It doesn't have to be a president or vice president. You could just contact anybody.
Thank you.
Thank you. Let's see, I guess we can get into the consent agenda then. Claudia? Alan? One of my functions, before we hop into the consent, Stephanie had just mentioned it, I was going to send an email out afterwards, but I can bring it up now, is one of the functions of the board president is to format or formulate the committees that we have. I'm going to send out an email. I didn't do it last year, I kind of changed it around a little bit last year. I have a method behind my madness with the committees, but I know we don't want to get too stagnant and be on the same committee all the time. So I'll send out an email, kind of getting some feedback from everyone. And as you know, I cannot make sure that everyone gets exactly what they want, but we'll try to place everybody on a committee that hopefully they're going to be happy about and work hard for. Okay, so that email will become forthcoming. So does anyone have any questions on the consent agenda? It's pretty short.
Not a, not a question, but I'm not sure the full board got the opportunity to understand what's happening in 10A as the curriculum committee did. I don't know if we discussed that as a full board. Pat, maybe? We did or we didn't?
No, we did not.
Do you want to maybe just give a two-minute rundown?
Sure, so. As you know, we just had a motion on, a resolution on a previous agenda approving all existing courses. We go through a process every year where we look at whether or not we're going to add any new courses to the, to our offerings. And in November, we approved several courses here at the high school. But one of the issues that we've been dealing with at the middle school is there's a spike of population, our seventh grade's extremely large. And as a result of that, what it's done is put us in a situation that our current offerings for the elective program, we only had four offerings for kids. And in order to fit all the students in, every one of our teachers who is in the elective program is teaching an overage, they're teaching six periods. So one of the charges I asked or gave Rob when he came on board was what we need to do is to look at that and to try to eliminate that. So one of the, an option that we've come forward with is to offer a fifth cycle class, which would be based upon a theater arts approach to, to that program. So that's what you're approving here tonight, which was just a discussion item at our last formal curriculum committee meeting. And then when we had the proposal put together, I emailed it to everybody. We had a virtual meeting and then we met after the first meeting in December in the other room to go over the proposals. So that's what you're approving here tonight.
And if somebody wasn't aware, because our kids all went to the middle school at different times, that, that current, the middle schoolers don't choose their electives, they cycle through every elective. So unlike where he says, where he says a fifth edition, it's, you know, it's not as though somebody can choose out of this and you end up in the same scenario. They're all going to.
Yeah, you would ask me that, of course, I want to clarify. But Rob's here, we can do it. We're going to give the kids choice of four, to pick, to pick what, their favorite ones? Or the one they want?
They would have a choice to pick either their favorite or their favorite two and then we would add the other two.
Oh, all right.
So they're going to have a little bit of choice, in fact.
Okay.
So I know I said no, but yeah, they're going to have a little choice.
Never mind.
Any other questions on the consent agenda?
Claudia?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Annette?
Yes.
Tracy Ellen?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
Barbara?
Yes.
Stephanie?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes. We can get into old business, new business for the board? I can start off just by, I know I had a notice in, in December for training requirements. I thought all year long I was okay. And then in December, Stephanie sent an email saying I needed governance for, which I subsequently, you know, Trudy was gracious enough to sign me up and I, I did it over the, the break. It was like an hour online. It was, you know, harmless. It was a lot of law cases, governance for. I don't know, does anyone else owe any training?
I, well, myself and Rob.
Yeah, you have to.
I have governance for also.
Okay, and it was like 50 minutes.
I remember it from personal.
Yeah, it was.
You don't owe it yet, you will now for it.
I will.
Oh, you will, okay.
You will now.
Is everyone caught up from 21?
Everyone would be contacted, still.
One person.
I am not caught up.
Okay, I think you do have to.
I didn't want to say it out loud.
No, that's all right. It's just a matter of, I just want to make sure that everyone is caught up. You do have to, you have to get registered though, correct?
Right, yes.
Okay, so make sure you.
Okay.
You may not, Tracy Ellen, you were able to do it yourself.
You can go online and just.
Stephanie did it.
Stephanie had to do it for me. I was registered for a class that I had already completed.
Okay.
So she had to change my registration.
So I would register you once you tell me what you.
Okay, it's just, you know, everyone just get caught up so we're not chasing our tails on that.
Alan has a question.
Yeah.
Also, where do we stand as a board on courses that we need to maintain our status with the New Jersey School Board?
It's, it's on pause.
I would think.
They've paused the timeline that's associated with it because of what we're dealing with, because of COVID. Because of COVID, yeah. So you're still a reg, certified board?
Do we still need to have Matt come in for an ethics presentation? Or? Isn't that a yearly?
It's not paused also.
A yearly gig?
That's on pause.
Oh, that?
That's on hold.
Okay, well, and then one other thing while we're at, on this subject is whether we want to pause it or not, board goals. We probably need to sit down.
I don't think we should. We did interim ones, I think we should.
I'm sorry.
We had done interim ones, I think, short-term because of COVID.
Right.
I, I think we need board goals.
Okay.
Just want to throw it out there so that it's not neglected.
Okay. Put something together on part of our board meeting. You know, we'll put it on the agenda so that we have an opportunity to discuss it as a board.
Okay.
That's what I meant, sorry.
I hope you're going to come with the big easel paper and write back and forth.
Sticky paper, yeah. Big posters.
Big posters.
That's what I refer to. I'm going to keep it in. Big posters.
Does anybody else have anything? Old business, new business?
If I, if I could, I didn't do it before, but I would also like to welcome Annette to the board. And she got busy already because Annette met with Trudy and I before the holiday break to kind of go over some of the operations of the board, how it works, agendas, board docs, that kind of stuff. So we had a nice opportunity to indoctrinate Annette into the system, so to speak. But welcome.
Thank you.
And congratulations, John and Claudia.
Go ahead, Stephanie.
And, you know, Annette's merit stand on her own, but I, I will expand because she didn't say herself that she spent a lot of time dedicated to our community as a library board member, of which I briefly was on the board with her as that. And, and it is a perfect compliment to her boardmanship here because it serves both people, young people, both community members and, and dovetails into community education. So I already know firsthand how wonderful she will be. And I'm glad that she's sitting, but she's very far away from me, but I'm glad she's sitting down there.
Yes.
Before election time, this will lose up.
Are people saying they're, they're dispersing? What's happening here?
And over the break, you know, Brian had sent out, Brian Pepe, the high school principal, sent out a, a little blurb or an email about the RDTV department, their. Their first live presentation toured this week in Riverdale, which, you know, I obviously watched the recording of it. I didn't see it live. And, uh, our superintendent even participated in this. And I, I couldn't help but, in case everyone didn't see it, Mr. Fletcher was, as you can see, was quite the trooper in participating. And I thought it was well done. So kudos to everyone involved.
The one time your beard would have been very.
I know, I know.
In that presentation. And, uh, one other thing I did notice over the, the break in, in the newspaper, one of Riverdale's own was mentioned, "Top 40 power players in North Jersey high school sports in 2021." This is written by Darren Cooper, who is a high school sports columnist for NewJersey.com. Number six out of 40 was Dennis Nelson, uh, the Riverdale Athletic Director and also the, uh, SFC Executive Director, a former number one on this list back in 2015. Nelson was the perfect choice to take over when Rich Hanson stepped away as head of the Super Bowl Super Football Conference. Smart and open-minded Nelson never acts impulsively, keeping his focus on what's best for the student athletes. So, uh, congratulations to Dennis Nelson on that honor. That's, uh, it's also nice to see Riverdale staff included in these kind of lists. Any other old business, new business? Okay, we'll hop into public comments on anything pertaining to Riverdale Regional School District. And I do want to recognize Joe Manzelli in the audience. Thank you, Joe, for coming in and thank you for your service to Riverdale Regional over the years. We're going to miss you.
I thought Joe was going to be on public.
Uh, instead of adjourning, do I have to make a motion to move to executive?
You do.
I do. Okay, so.
Motion?
Claudia? And Stephanie will second. Okay. New business?
Yeah, when we come out, there'll be no business.
Right. When we do come out of that meeting, there'll be no, uh, no new business.
Well, you won't be, uh, open afterwards?
No. You got it. All in favor? 810.